You guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. So are we good to go?
Yes, sir. We are good to go.
Ready? Well, good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to arising issues from COVID-19, the board is using a teleconferencing format for today's meeting. We are all participating via the World Wide Web. If you would like to make a public comment today, please make sure you are identified by name in the Web X. In commenting during unscheduled appearances, please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. And after we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, we will be doing a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboon?
Here.
Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Very good. We have five in attendance today. We will now move to the invocation, and we have Pablo Rivera, First United Methodist Church.
Looks like you're muted, sir.
Good morning, all of you. Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of the giver of good gift, and we thank you today for all your blessings. For the successful outcomes of this Board of Supervisors meeting, I ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberation and help them to be wise in the decisions they make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in leader God who is here today. Give them insight to live with integrity, that their decisions reflect what is right and good. Keep them from short sighted. Have them to make decisions that are for the good all and guard them from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory to be yours, loving God, now and forever and ever. Amen.
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 Amen. Okay, at this point, we'll move to the flag salute. If you would, please stand and join me in the flag salute. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you all. At this point, we will move to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject, matter, jurisdiction. The board, two minutes are allowed for each item. Madam Clerk?
Hi, yes, this is Catherine Ventarella, Clerk to the Board of Supervisors. We have received two letters from Scott J. Rafferty, eternity at law, and one letter from Valley Voices, which all of the board have received and will become part of the permanent record. We also have Paula Massey online. She would like to speak this morning.
Very good. Paula, please go ahead.
She's on mute. Paula, you're muted.
There I am. Hi. Hello, everybody. My name is Paula Massey, and I'm from Hanford, California. And I wanted to speak a little bit on the decisions that the county, that our supervisors made, County Board of Supervisors made on last Tuesday regarding the BLM post that was put on Facebook. I'm going to be very brief with this because we only got two minutes. I thought I had three. But I was wondering, I was really concerned about the decision that was made as to what do we want our community to look like, okay? When we have things like this posted, and plus it's posted with a background of Kings County Veterans Affairs on the background, we have a lot of African-American veterans in our community. So I did a little research on this belt loops matter and where it came from, and I'm not sure whether when you made the decision, you understood what was actually happening and what the term meant. That term dates back, Black Lives, BLM, sagging pants dates back to slavery. When slave owners, angry slave owners would see a slave that they felt was disrespectful or not in compliance with what they would do, they would take them out with their family and have have them lay over a boulder or a tree trunk, have somebody whip them, and then the slave owner would come behind and pull his pants down. Now, the slave has his pants halfway down. It would come behind him and rape him in front of his family to show that this is what happens to you when you sag your pants, when you're disrespectful. Sagging of the pants was even done at the time they were hanging slaves. If you notice pictures, slaves, the people who were hung, they had their pants hung halfway down below their bottom. In the Bible, it talks about sagging pants. So a lot of the stuff that we see going on right now, our young people don't understand what this is about, but it's not because of something that we did. It was something that was perpetrated upon black people by white slave owners. So what Scott did, I'm not sure whether he knew it, but I'm pretty sure he did because they did talk about sagging. I would like for you to take a look at the decision that you made because he isn't appointed official by you guys, and I would love to see you make that, make some type of change. I would love to see him give a public apology also to us. It also, it's not even in the newspaper. Why isn't this put in the newspaper? Why do my people not even know about it? And I talked to a lot of people about this, and they all think that it came from the prison. Yes, it is in the prison, but according to the Thirteenth Amendment, slavery was transferred over into the prison when it was abolished, okay? So let's think about it. I want you guys to think about it. This is our county. This is our city, and you need to think about what message you're sending for people to put something like this on their Facebook page with that logo behind them, and you just give them a slap on the head. To me, that's a slap on the head. Four hours of diversity training, a letter to them, and also six months of doc pay, that's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any further comments?
Okay, thank you. I'm concerned about the National Democratic Corporation, which has a record of shady work on redistricting, the process meant to include a changing population in three separate cases. They've had litigation. National Democratic Corporation will cost the county millions in legal fees for subpar work, and this is shown in Kern County that had an $11 million legal fees on Kern County versus Luna. We oppose hiring the National Democratic Corporation. Demographic, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Further comments?
That's all that we are aware of this morning. Chairman?
Okay, well, thank you, and thank everyone for your comments today, and we truly respect. Thank you again for your comments. Okay, on to item three, which is women's history recognition, and Rebecca and Karia, please take it away.
Give me one second. I'm going to share my screen.
While Karia is sharing her screen, this is Rebecca Campbell, County Administrative Officer. I just want to mention Women's History Month, and I wanted to just talk about a note this week that happened to me. My daughter is in fifth grade, and they're learning about Women's History Month, so she came to me and talked to me about it. And I said, so do you want to make a presentation at the board? And she said, no. She was a little shy, so I was just pretty proud that she's learning about Women's History Month, and children in Kings County are learning about it.
So Karia, I could have you kick it off. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Karia Martinez, Assistant County Administrative Officer. So March is the month where we take the time to look back and honor many achievements of women through history and the vast strides made by women today. The annual Observance of National Women's History Week was declared by the Presidential Proclamation by President Carter in 1980 and was declared a National Women's History Month by Congress in 1987. Women's History takes a new look at all that has gone before and tells the story of a shared past from a different perspective, not rewriting history, but presenting and expanding a version of history that recognizes and honors the accomplishments of women. The month of March celebrates the contribution women have made throughout history, science, politics, law, sports, arts, entertainment, and many other fields. Some women we recognize Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Harriet Tubman, Amelia Earhart, Eleanor Roosevelt, inventor actress Heidi Lamar, scientist Diane Frosty, mathematician Katherine Johnson, astronaut Sally Ride, and Macy Jemison, authors Maya Angelou and Amy Tan. This year for our presentation, we honor women who have contributed to the fight against COVID-19. We recognize women leader in our community. First, we start off with Dulce Uola. Dulce started working for Kings County Public Health Department in 2007. She's extremely passionate about nursing. She cares for her clients of this community and finds it especially rewarding to be part of an organization that prioritizes their well-being. She finds it especially rewarding to be at the forefront of all the pandemic, helping to lead the way of her fellow nurses. She wants to thank management and all of her coworkers for their hard work and dedication because without them, this past year would have been even more difficult. The Public Health Department writes, "From the early days of testing to the massive task of vaccine rollout, Dulce has stepped up and done whatever is needed to assist the department's COVID-19 response." Dulce is a immunization coordinator and has played a critical role in vaccination efforts, not only for our own clinics, but as a resident vaccine expert for providers during vaccine transfer. These photos are of Dulce administering shots. So in honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Dulce Uola, a woman making history in Kings County. Next, we have Bernice Yapes. Bernice started working in the Health Department five years ago. She has a brother who has health disabilities, so she has a passion to help others. When COVID-19 first hit in our community, the opportunity presented itself for her to jump in hands-on and support. She learned that certain things are never easy, but they sure are possible as long as they stick together. She is confident that we will surpass the pandemic together, and she is grateful to be, that she has been able to help in any way possible, and will continue to give 100% to the community. The Public Health Department writes, "Bernice is another person who has pulled, been pulled in many directions during COVID-19, playing critical support roles in testing, training, case investigation, and vaccine rollout. Anytime there is, she is asked to step into a new COVID role, she meets the challenge with a smile and excels at each task in front of her, often helping improve processes along the way. She is a problem solver, a leader, and extremely hard worker." In honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Bernice Yapes, a woman making history in Kings County. Next, we have Kathleen Slayer, who is a nurse for the Hanford Elementary School District. She's been a school nurse for Kings County for the past 10 years. School nursing has allowed her to serve her community in ways of ensuring health and safety for students in the school setting, and also providing advocacy, education, and connecting resources to families within her school district. This past year has been a reminder of health disparities that exist for the underserved population here in Kings County, and Kathleen hopes to be able to continue to help bridge the gap in access to healthcare in any way that she can. The Public Health Department writes, "It was immediately apparent that Kathleen is an incredible caring and compassionate advocate for underserved children and families in Kings, and is willing to do whatever is necessary to be the voice for those without one. Seeing this impact of COVID has had on so many families, she works with, the work that Kathleen has provided, resource, information to share, and provide education materials and related topics, and has found every way to get involved directly, connecting people to support they need. In these incredibly challenging times, Kathleen has chosen to let kindness and service to others remain at the forefront of all she does." In honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Kathleen Slayer, a woman making history in Kings County. Next, we have Teri Bogus, who is Infection Prevention Director at Venice Health. Teri is a registered nurse and is currently serving as the Infection Prevention Director of Venice Health. She began her nursing career at Venice Health in 1987, and has worked, and she worked as an intensive care nurse for 10 years and then became Director of the unit. She has been with the Infection Prevention Department for nearly nine years and is certified in infection control. Teri has her Bachelor's of Science degree in nursing from Grand Canyon University, is a member and past president of the local chapter of Association of Professionals in Infection Control. The Public Health Department writes that Teri has been instrumental in managing an ever-changing environment during the COVID-19 pandemic. She and her infection prevention team have worked diligently to implement new processes, track day-by-day COVID-19 data, and ensure our four Venice Health hospitals and more than 40 clinics across the Central Valley are compliant and in line with Center for Disease Control and Prevention guidelines. Her leadership has been critical in helping at Venice Health safely care for thousands of COVID-19 positive patients during the pandemic. In honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Teri Bogus as a woman making history in Kings County. Next, we have Dr. Mina Raju. She's infectious disease physician at Venice Health. She is a board-certified physician who's been with at Venice Health for the past 14 years. She completed her doctoral program at Midwestern University in Glendale, Arizona, followed by internal medicine internship and residency at Maricopa Medical Center in Phoenix, Arizona. She then completed her infectious disease fellowship at University of Connecticut Health in Connecticut. Dr. Raju takes a whole-person approach to caring for a patient and is a partner in helping our communities achieve health and well-being. Her leadership in managing the antimicrobial stewardship program has been instrumental in our infection prevention efforts and is integral to ensuring the best possible outcomes for our patients. The Public Health Department states, "Since COVID-19 arrived in Central Valley, Dr. Mina Raju has provided direct patient cares to all hospitalized COVID-19 positive patients. By researching and staying at the forefront of the best care practices through the pandemic, Dr. Raju has saved thousands of lives. Her passion for her work and compassionate care, she provides truly reflects the Venice Health mission of living God's love by inspiring health, willingness, and hope." In honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Mina Raju, a woman making history in Kings County. And last, we have Dr. Yolanda Tina Harrow. Dr. Yolanda Tina Harrow is currently a third-year resident physician in the Department of OBGYN Sciences at the University of California, San Francisco, the top nation's top OB-GYN residency program. During her residency, she has published a study in American Journal, Maternal-Fetal Medicine, and prenatal outcomes with patients with methamphetamine use, and presented research on breastfeeding women, breastfeeding rates among women with maternal cardiac disease at the International Congress on Cardiac Problems in Pregnancy. In addition to being an essential healthcare worker during the COVID-19 pandemic, she is also co-presented at a round's presentation titled COVID-19 Pregnancy, providing the latest evidence and guidelines for care and management of pregnant women with COVID-19. She is from Corcoran, graduated from Corcoran High School, where she was selected as a J.G. Boswell Scholar and Gates Millennium Scholar. She received a BS in Biology from UCLA and continued her medical education at UC Davis School of Medicine. She will be working as a volunteer with our Public Health Department in the next coming weeks. In honor of Women's History Month, we'd like to recognize Yolanda Tina Harrow as a woman making history in Kings County. Thank you to all our local women leaders, and thank you for providing your information. I know most of you are on the Web X, so thank you for attending. Staff requests that your board adopt a resolution recognizing March 2021 as Women's History Month in Kings County. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by County Council. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and to the women that was recognized today, and to all women in our community, we truly appreciate your leadership and the, you know, the positive things that you bring to our community that help to keep our citizens healthy and, you know. And again, just want to thank you for your leadership and commitment to Kings County and the great community that you live in. So I understand we have a, would entertain a motion to accept the...
Comment, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I think, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank you for keeping this tradition going, and thank the staff. I applaud all of you for, this is a great theme, Mr. Chairman. When I heard about this, I was very happy about this, so thank you and staff for keeping this going. I just want to very quickly thank the women, these leaders here that are being recognized here today, and also just so many others around the county, too many to name, but for the women that are here today, thank you for your work during this pandemic. As we all know, this time last year, things were just going crazy. It was scary to a lot of folks, I think to all of us. But as you think back on it and knowing what was coming, and the stories we heard of the hospitals overflowed, and just what you faced every day, you know, it's reminiscent of the stories we heard going back on 9/11, where you hear these stories of these courageous firefighters who were running up the stairs of the Twin Towers when other folks were fleeing and running down and escaping to safety, and these men, those brave men and women, those firefighters in public safety going up the stairs. And to me, that's you. You went to those hospitals every day. You went to areas treating patients that you knew had COVID, and so many of you picked up the infection from your work environment, but without you, things would be far worse. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me a minute to comment.
Very good. Thank you. So at this point, as staff has something prepared, and if you would, I would entertain a motion to accept?
Yeah, this is Supervisor Verboon. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Women's History Recognition, and I want to thank staff for putting that together. I think you guys did a great job this year. Last year, kind of put on a backside because of COVID, but I say it every year when we do this, the men in the world would not be anywhere without the leadership of the women in our lives. So thank you for all your leadership and guidance you've given us throughout our lives. So thank you.
Nev, seconds. Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Very good. We have five in favor. And thanks again to all you ladies for all you do for us in our... All right, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the March 16th 2021 regular meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes from March 16th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Okay, I cut out a little bit, but I think we had five in favor, so thank you for that. And we'll move to the consent calendar, item five, and I understand we may have some modifications. Is that correct?
Not today, Superintendent.
Mr. Chair, with respect to Consent Agenda Item 5D, the memorandum of understanding that was submitted with the original agenda and published last Friday was the incorrect copy. A correct copy has now been provided to all the board members and is available to the public through the clerk's office.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. So at this point, then, I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Nev, seconds. All right, very good. We have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Thank you for that. We'll move to items six, which is regular into items, and we start off with County Council.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is Diane Freeman, Deputy County Counsel. As you recall, on March 9th this year, County Counsel brought for the board's consideration and confirmation the question of whether the board wanted to hire a redistricting consultant, and if so, which consultant it wanted to hire. County Counsel confirmed that under Public Contract Code Section 10335.5, the hiring of legal consulting services is not subject to the RFP bidding process, and County Counsel indicated that it had formally investigated and contacted all known demographers that provided redistricting consultant services in California. After evaluating all of the responses received, County Counsel recommended National Demographics Corporation as the preferred redistricting consultant. However, just prior to the March 9th, 2021 board meeting, the clerk to the board received four letters expressing concern over the county's possible selection of NDC as its redistricting consultant. In response, the board tabled the matter to today for further investigation. In addition, members of the board requested County Counsel to reach out to other local districts in Kings County subject to the 2021 redistricting to ascertain their interest in working with the county on the possibility of harmonizing supervisory and local district lines. Pursuant to the board's direction, County Counsel has contacted 27 local districts with territory in Kings County to invite them to join the county's public redistricting process and to explore the possibility of co-locating district boundaries for public convenience. At this time, the county has heard back from 11 of the 27 districts, with nearly all expressing an interest in participating in the county's redistricting process. County Counsel also investigated the objections that had been raised regarding the possible selection of NDC as the county's redistricting consultant. County Counsel reviewed the cases cited by objectors and spoke with professionals that regularly work with NDC. Its further investigation revealed that NDC is used widely for redistricting by local governments throughout the state. NDC has assisted local governments in 368 redistricting and redistricting matters since 2001, with none of their maps having been rejected by a court or the US Department of Justice. In addition, the California State Association of Counties and the County Council's Association each recently selected NDC to provide statewide training on the recent changes to the redistricting process, thereby expressing confidence in NDC's expertise in the field. With respect to the specific objections raised by interested parties against the selection of NDC, nearly all of the criticisms cited involved expert witness testimony given by NDC's president, Dr. Doug Johnson. During litigation in defense of districting decisions... NDC's president, Dr. Doug Johnson, during litigation in defense of districting decisions and maps over which he had no prior involvement. As I stated earlier, none of the maps created by NDC in the 368 districting and redistricting projects it's been involved in since 2001 have been rejected by a court or the U.S. Department of Justice. After further investigation, County Council continues to believe that NDC has the necessary expertise to assist the county in its redistricting process and that it will do so competently, without bias, and in compliance with the law. Based on the company's years of experience, the number of districting and redistricting projects it has successfully completed and its knowledge of the county through work performed in 2011, County Council continues to recommend NDC to the board. County Council recommends that this board select National Demographics Corporation as a redistricting consultant to assist the board through the County Council's office in all phases of the redistricting process. It further recommends that the board authorize County Council to enter into an agreement to retain NDC's services and that it approve the necessary budget change. I am available for questions that you may have with respect to any of the criticisms raised. Mr. or Dr. Doug Johnson is on the line as well and available to field questions.
Very good. Thank you. I guess maybe before we get into discussion, if the doctor would like to make a brief presentation, just introducing himself and if he would like. If not, we can move to the vote.
Sure. This is Dr. Johnson and I appreciate the opportunity. I'll keep this very short and just don't want to make it a pitch. So I'll just address the concerns a little bit more that were raised. Just a couple of things, you know, there are lots of claims in these letters that I certainly understand why you'd be concerned that NDC's decisions cost taxpayer money or anything like that. And as County Council just mentioned, all the cases where they were talking about expert witness, that litigation was already involved. One of the letters called NDC a litigation magnet, in fact, were a litigation cleanup firm, were brought in when jurisdictions didn't hire us originally, if they do end up in litigation, to help clean that up. And that happens a lot. Obviously, anytime there's litigation, there will be controversy, but we repeatedly are brought in to help out in those situations. And many of the ruling cited are either cited incorrectly, and I'm happy to discuss those in detail if there are any specific ones you'd like me to address. Or, for example, the discussion of the West Contra Costa case where they claim the district admitted liability in violation of Voting Rights Act. As a person who read that letter is fully aware, that case was about their at-large elections, not about the district maps that we drew. So just wanted to make those big picture points and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that any of you would like addressed in particular. Thank you for this opportunity.
Very good. Dr. Johnson, thank you so much for your comments and we'll bring it back to the board for deliberation, discussion, questions.
Comments, questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my first question is in general, the other companies that are listed here, were they invited to get a couple of minutes online before the board as well today? I'd like that to be known.
Mr. Valley, or Chairman Valley, I'm sorry.
I'm not Chairman Supervisor.
I am so sorry, Supervisor Valley. They were not invited. It's something that could always be considered, but County Council did an investigation and did select NDC as its preferred provider for these services. And on that basis, I asked Mr. Johnson to be available in order to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Next question, when you say County Council conducted an investigation, who did that? Because I spoke to a member at a County Council's office last week and I was given information about the investigation or the lack of one. So can you tell me who or tell the board and the public who took the time and how much time to investigate or look into concerns provided by the public two weeks ago?
Yes, Supervisor Valley, I can absolutely address that. I conducted the investigation. I have spent many, many hours reviewing the allegations in these letters, talking to professionals who have used NDC services. I personally talked to each one of the demographers in California that I was aware of. I received a comprehensive list, or what I believe was a comprehensive list, it's certainly larger than I could gather on my own. And I called each one of those demographers, invited them to participate, asked them if they would submit some written materials for my consideration. I looked at them all, I followed up on them and spent much, much time looking into this issue.
Okay, did all of that take place before this past Thursday?
That process has taken over, has taken place over the last month. It started after the initial presentation to your board considering the redistricting process. I started reaching out to demographers at that point. It continued until I made my recommendation and then I followed up since our last board meeting with additional research and questions into the allegations raised at the March 9th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll close with this. I don't want to hog up all the time. Mr. Chairman, you know, every 10 years as we have to do this here, this redistricting, or at least the last one that I was personally part of since being elected in November of 2008, I was here when we did this 10 years ago. We want and we need this process to be fair, transparent. The last thing we need is any type of negativity associated with the redistricting process in the County of Kings. I just have to say that, just coming in this, obviously being open-minded, to me, it's already a concern that we had so many people reach out to us, either through county email or social media or letters and public appearances, that, you know, there's already a negative matter associated starting off here. And so two weeks ago, to meet that, I made a motion, I took in a friendly amendment by my colleague Supervisor Nev, and I asked staff to take the two weeks in my motion that we passed to thoroughly look into this. And I just don't feel, and based on conversation with staff, that we had a legitimate time putting the matter into these concerns. And I believe that if any company here, as I'm looking at the background memo, if any one of these other companies can provide the services, which it says so in this document, then, you know, if they can all meet the objectives that council is looking to do to present a very fair and transparent redistricting process to the Board of Supervisors and to the public, then we should go with one of these other companies, Mr. Chairman. And I'll close with this. Three weeks ago, there were two farmers that came on during unscheduled appearances and they had concerns over the hemp regulations in our county's, you know, the laws that we have already voted on as it relates to that. Mr. Chairman, you took those concerns, you know, very seriously and I applaud you for that. In fact, when one of the farmers showed up late, you wrote back our agenda back to unscheduled appearances to allow that gentleman to have a conversation, then you allowed them to be included as the board took immediate action. And so my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is if you're going to take these concerns from these Hispanic residents that have come forward over the last couple of days, are you going to take those concerns just as seriously and help us move forward in a decision today much fairer and showing that we're being responsive to those concerns? It looks like very legitimate concerns from the records and what I've read and what I've researched. Are we going to start off today on our redistricting process with a big negative and a big disregard to concerns by the public and just turn around and take up this recommendation today? For the record, Mr. Chairman, I'm disappointed that it just comes back two weeks later with the clock ticking and the same recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lee Burdick, County Counsel. I would just like to make sure the record is clear that since unscheduled appearances were closed, the board has received two late filed email objections. One is from Ashley Neely and another is from Barbara Hill. They raised similar concerns to those that have already been entered into the record. They too will be, become part of the administrative record and I wanted to be sure that the public knew they are available, copies are available from the clerk and that the board here in chambers has been given copies.
Very good. Thank you. Further comments or questions by the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Verboon. My question is to council, so who did we use last 10 years ago for a consultant or did we use a consultant? And do we need to use a consultant? I know most, most of the work is done by community development and it's basically just done by populations and so, both not?
On February 23rd, I believe, we brought to the board a study session on the redistricting and Mr. Gatska, who is Director of Community Development, made it clear that 10 years ago, when the board last did redistricting, it in fact used a consultant, NDC, that community development did play a very limited role, but the project was managed through County Council's office. That information was very helpful to us in making a recommendation regarding this bi-decennial redistricting because NDC, having been used 10 years ago, does have familiarity with the county's communities of interest and we felt that would assist them in being responsive to the county's needs, particularly given that the census data is going to be late. We've been informed by the federal government that it's likely we're going to get it in September and the county, the statutory deadlines for completing the redistricting process will not change because we get the census data late. So we believe that one of the advantages that NDC offered was that they participated in the last round and would be able to pick up on the communities of interest and draw the line quickly, work with the public through the required public process to draw the lines in a nonpartisan manner and in a rapid and efficient manner.
So we didn't have a problem with them 10 years ago, correct?
That is my understanding.
And I'm just trying to, you know, justify, I know last 10 years ago, we had a lot of people complain about going through the census, I mean not census, but to the redistricting. We went to public hearing, we went to the schools, we listened to it, but at the end of the day, it was a painless process. It didn't really hurt, it just, you know, the districts changed by growth and I don't know, I mean, I'm concerned that we have so many letters against this, I don't know, I want to see some facts, how it affects us in the future if we choose them. If we choose them 10 years ago, we're still all doing our jobs, so this is a concern, this question. I don't know if Mr. Gatska wants to weigh in on it. I know that their office does actual physical work on it. If Mr. Gatska would like to weigh in, if it was an easy, easy redistricting last time, I know it took about a year to do it, but, you know, looking back, it wasn't a problem. But I remember when we started, it was going to be a problem. It turned out it wasn't a problem and we used DNC. So I don't know if these complaints are warranted or what, we got them all, so that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Supervisor Verboon, through the chair, just in response to your last point, doing our research, in essence, we found that with respect to all four demographers that we looked at who work in California, virtually all of them had challenges against them, similar to the ones that have been lodged against NDC, except some of them were from the opposite end of the spectrum politically. So if the board would like us to bring them forward so that they can do presentations to the board and you can better evaluate, we're happy to do that. We're not tied to any one of these. I've explained why NDC was our recommended consultant, but we're open to the board choosing any of them. Regardless of which consultant the board selects, we would like to encourage the folks who took the time to come before the board and submit their concerns to participate in the very public process by which the consultant will work with County Council's office and the public to determine those community of interests and make sure that the redistricting lines are drawn consistent with the law, which requires consideration of those communities.
So as an elected official, we can't really be involved because it could affect our outcome of our voter base, correct?
Actually, you do. You do have a role in this, but it is at the end of the day. It is once, when Ms. Freeman came to the board in February to talk about the redistricting process, she said, given statutory changes that have been made since the redistricting lines were drawn 10 years ago, you have three options on how you approach redistricting. The first one would be to establish an independent commission. In that case, the board has no role in the redistricting process. The independent commission is tasked with going through the public process and redrawing the lines. In the second case, it's called a hybrid commission, which the board would appoint people to the commission and it would go through the very public process of redistricting. Then it would make a recommendation to the board and the board would then approve which it felt were the most compliant redistricting boundaries. The third option, and this is the one the board directed that we pursue, is that we do not establish a commission, but that the project be managed through County Council's office, just as it was 10 years ago, with a consultant and that through that process, having gone through four public hearings, public outreach, et cetera, the recommendation come back to the board for approval. It's not too late to change that. However, that's the direction that the board gave staff and County Council's office in February.
Can you make a motion so we can talk about it?
Mr. Chairman, foreign emotions, can I do a follow-up question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's hard for you from not being in the chambers either, so sorry if I'm speaking up and raising my hand. Mr. Chairman, I guess from council's comments, it does raise some questions. One, to the point of asking these folks to participate, they're participating right now and they're asking to be heard with some legitimate concerns here. There's a lot of time and energy on here. Again, Mr. Chairman, the other question through you to council is to suit Verboon's point that we worked with them 10 years ago, have these concerns, these actions that cause concern, have they taken place after we last worked with them? I think we need to know that for the record. And lastly, Mr. Chair, through you to council, the question is, is I voted to go with the model of having a consultant to work with County Council's office to bring us back the options to vote on at the end of the day? I didn't do that to be put in a position, to be put in a position before the public here. So I'm asking if council feels that her decision and light of the concerns by some members of the public to just come back and recommend NBC without us even getting to hear from the other vendors, if we make a decision today in her opinion, does that put the Board of Supervisors at risk? Does that put the County of Kings at risk under this very sensitive redistricting topic? Thank you for allowing me to follow up, Mr. Chairman, and I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I respond to Supervisor Valley's questions? Thank you for those questions, Supervisor Valley. We at least could have addressed the first one in advance, but I appreciate you raising it. but I appreciate you raising it. Uh, yes, the, the three cases that have been cited in the letters that were received, uh, at the, at the, the last meeting regarding the recommendation of NDC occurred since, uh, uh, the last redistricting process. You are correct. The, the Luna case, uh, Luna v. Kern occurred, was filed in 2016 and was resolved in 2018 with a settlement, not a court order, but a settlement. And Dr. Johnson's testimony, he served as a, an expert witness in that case, not as the original redistricting consultant as he mentioned earlier. Uh, so, um, that case never went to trial and there were no judicial orders regarding Dr. Johnson's testimony. Uh, and he can address, uh, the Contra Costa case in more detail. I haven't looked at that one personally. Um, with respect to the claim, uh, that, that, uh, the choice of NDC will draw litigation, um, I have no reason to believe that any of the others would not draw litigation as well because of the, um, um, concerns of all citizens of every partisan stripe about the, uh, drawing of local district lines. Uh, so that, that's a tough one. If the board would like, uh, based on the objections that have been raised, to bring in all four consultants and have them present to the board, we're happy to arrange that. We've got the time. Uh, while the process really can't take ground until we get the census data, which will likely be in September, uh, we would like to hire the consultant at the earliest reasonable opportunity so that we can front load the process with as much data and information as possible so that when we get the census data, we can move quickly towards public participation, get the, get the consultant up to speed, uh, as to where, as the snapshot of where we are right now. So we, we've got the time for the board to do that if they would like. Uh, I would just suggest that we probably shouldn't go through this serially, uh, having county council come with one consultant and then objections come in and then we, we say, no, we're not going to hire them. And then we come with another recommendation and objections come in because our, our basic research suggests that someone's going to object to all of them. So, um, if the board would like, we're happy to adopt a different approach and would be happy with whoever the board chooses, uh, to fulfill this role.
Thank, thank you, counsel, for, uh, answering, for responding. Uh, I know, I know as attorney you like and you demand clear answers. It kind of went around my question, but it sounds like the question of if, uh, your recommendation, uh, of NBC with the, uh, public concerns already on record will put the county at risk. That sounded like a long way in to get to a yes. That being said, uh, you bring up these other concerns that you believe would happen. But yeah, we don't have them on record. And I think the board, Mr. Chairman, that we can only deal with what we have here. No one else took the time to come and complain about any of these other ones. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you ready, if there's no more discussion, if you're ready to entertain a motion, I, I would like to make one.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Greg Gatska would like to make some comments as well.
Chairman, he did have his hand raised, but he no longer does.
Okay. Okay. Uh, further questions, comments by the board?
Uh, did you, did you freeze up, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, he's out or, or, or.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's giving a low bandwidth issue.
Yeah.
There he is.
There he is.
Yeah. Uh, please go ahead. You know, if you make a motion or, uh, further comments.
I, if, if you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, can I be recognized to make a motion? Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't want to force any issue, um, to the board today or, or put any pressure on anyone. Um, I think, uh, the fairest thing to do would it take, would, would be to take up county council's, uh, offer, uh, to allow the, um, all of those who submitted the fairness and the, and the, uh, equal and fair time, uh, to present to the board. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess, like, very simply, uh, if that would require a motion, the motion would be to, um, uh, table this, uh, at the time that county council is comfortable to bring back, uh, a fuller presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there? Okay. Uh, I can to that motion point live.
I'll make a motion to liberation.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, accept the National Democratic Corporation, uh, as a redistrict, redistricting consultant.
Uh, I will second that, Mr. Chair, with the, uh, uh, also the direction that, uh, staff continues to work with the, um, local districts to ensure that there is coordination, may, maybe not always, uh, agreement, but at least coordination between the, um, uh, other 27 districts, uh, that, that are located in Kings County. And I would hope that that would mean those that are even hosted outside Kings County, like, um, West Coast College District, West, uh, Kings, uh, County Water, uh, the Kings River Water Association and I think that's the two, and a conservation.
Laguna.
Laguna.
Yeah, and Laguna was here on Monday and they were already working with council. So.
Yeah. So I, yeah. And I, and again, I didn't see the list of the 27 different agencies, but I think that component to me is more important, uh, is the most important, to be able to work cohesively and, and cooperatively with all of the districts in Kings County. Again, we're not going to have a perfect, um, scenario because everyone has different roles and responsibilities. But I think we, I, I, I think this proposal has changed enough to garner my support in that it will comprehensively take in all the other, um, districts that operate within Kings County's boundaries.
And Supervisor Verboon, that was a friendly amendment. Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, he's out again.
Yes, please. Uh, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead and call the roll.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I just want to be clear from county council that there's a clear motion.
The motion, Mr. Chair, just for the record, is to accept NDC as the county's redistricting consultant for this round of redistricting and that staff be directed to continue coordinating, uh, with at least the 27 districts who are also redistricting this year and any others that are close by the county to ensure a coordinated process and a collaborative and cooperative process.
Yep. Can you hear me, guys?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay.
Can you hear us?
So, uh, yes. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Yeah.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Hi.
Richard Fagundez?
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, four in favor and one against. It is a four-fifth, so it does, uh, have the, uh, adequate votes to move forward. And, uh, so with the next, uh, regular agenda item five B, which is administration, Rebecca Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rebecca Campbell, County Administrative Officer. Good morning, board members. This is the weekly update regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll go over the activities for the last week. Last week, Governor Gavin Newsom signed two fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget cleanup bills, and we are waiting for, uh, the emergency paid sick leave bill for consideration, and we're monitoring that one. So just going over the bills that he did sign. The first one is related to alcoholic beverage control license renewal fee waivers. This is to clean up, to expand the license types eligible for fee waivers and appropriate $6 million to the alcohol beverage control fund to backfill lost renewal fee waivers and revenues. The other bill that was adopted was a one-time stimulus and grant payments, the garnishment, um, exclusion from gross income. So this is a cleanup to ensure that the Golden State stimulus payments are exempt from garnishments, orders, and gross income for personal income tax purposes. The bill that we are watching, the paid emergency sick leave, it would extend emergency paid sick leave of 80 hours per calendar year to the public and private sector workers who are unable to work due to COVID-19 retroactively to January 1 of 2021. So we're continuing to monitor that one. Also this week, the Internal Revenue Service announced it was moving the federal personal income tax deadline to May 17th. The California Franchise Tax Board did the same. While the move is helpful to taxpayers grappling with the ongoing pandemic, it may create challenges when it comes to the May revision budgeting and for the county. On the federal side, the recently approved American Rescue Plan, that's what it's called. So that's the new term. American Rescue Plan provides an additional extension of the family's first coronavirus relief act tax credits through September 20 of 21 for employers with less than 500 employees that voluntary provide COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave. The American Rescue Plan provides these tax credits as an additional set of tax credits for 80 hours or two weeks of COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave beginning on April 1 of 2021. The American Rescue Plan also authorizes leave to be taken when getting a COVID-19 vaccine or is recovering from an injury, disability, illness, or condition related to the vaccine. We are awaiting more details about the receipts of funds and reporting requirements of the American Rescue Plan, and we will share as those come in. I am do envision bringing a study session later on, um, once we have those details. On the county side, the county emergency operations center does continue to meet, and I would like to turn it over to Director of Public Health, and he will give the local public health update. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board at Hill Public Health. Uh, I'd like to turn off by congratulating both of our public health staff, Bernice and Dulce, on their recognition today. They both deserve it very well. I'd also like to start my report as I always do by reminding everyone the simple steps that we can all take to protect ourselves from clinical diseases. Those are frequently wash your hands for 20 seconds or more. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay hydrated with water. A hydrated cell is a healthy cell. Stay home if you're sick and wear cloth face coverage to protect yourself and loved ones. Our numbers as of today, we've collected 194,493 samples. We currently have 243 results pending. We are currently monitoring 5,581 individuals. Our current total cases since the outbreak began is now at 15,319 with 221 deaths, unfortunately. Uh, total recovered is 9,517, bringing our active case count to 5,581. Our skilled nursing facilities thankfully haven't changed. Uh, since the outbreak began, they've had 311 cases with 269 recovered and unfortunately 42 deaths. Uh, the state prison outbreaks, as mentioned last week, I had very little confidence in the numbers that were being reported by the CDC or, because we noticed they hadn't been changing at all, which would indicate a, a breakdown in this, uh, coordination between the systems and the state's Calretti system. We did reach out and we did find out that they were not changing and we've been working with the state to correct those numbers. Uh, and as such, all of those, uh, individuals have been recovered at this time. Their outbreak, or excuse me, their numbers since the outbreak began is a total of 7,660 cases. That's 1,241 in Corcoran, 3,400, or excuse me, 3,294 at Avonale State Prison and 3,125 at SADA. They've collected 121,215 samples with 46 results pending. Their active cases at this time are zero. Uh, they've recovered, uh, 7,188 and unfortunately 17 deaths. We currently have no. We continue to watch hospital data closely. Uh, we continue to see decreases in med surge or general admissions and ICU admissions, both locally and throughout the region. As of, uh, March 21st of this year, the local hospital had 18, uh, COVID admits and medical surge or general admission and zero patients in the intensive care unit. We currently are still maintaining a 60-day supply of PPE for all of our healthcare facilities. Uh, our mobile testing program site, uh, schedule is up on our website. Uh, as mentioned at your last, or the board meeting last week, uh, I'm still waiting to hear word about, uh, the expansion of testing with municipalities. Uh, I will be speaking with the state this week on that topic this Thursday. Our current numbers for the, uh, state's blueprint for a safer economy, our new cases for 100,000 as of today is at 9.9, uh, and we continue to see a decline in new cases. As I've mentioned before, we did see that spike, uh, which drove up our positivity rate, but that seemed as, in the, excuse me, our positivity rate in the lowest quartile of the HPI, but that seems to have recovered. Our overall testing positivity as of today is at 3.4% and our testing positivity in the lowest quartile of the Healthy Places Index is now at 4.3. Uh, that's down from the 6.9 that I reported last week. Uh, so this means our new cases for 100,000 meets the red tier criteria and our testing positivity for both the HPI and overall testing positivity meets the orange career, or orange tier criteria. So if we're able to maintain the new cases for 100,000 or the testing positivity, those two tier values below, we will be eligible to move into the red tier, uh, hopefully next week. Our current test per 100,000 is still maintaining at about the 230 range. Uh, it is at, uh, 230 per day. The state's median has been adjusted to 317, uh, so we are still testing more than the state median, which gives us credit in our new cases for 100,000. As mentioned, our new case for 100,000 is at 9.9. That's our adjusted rate for the credit for our testing efforts. And the unadjusted rate is at 12 person, or at 12. Uh, as far as the vaccine update, uh, last Monday on March 15th, uh, the eligibility for those, uh, who can get vaccinated were expanded to those between ages of 16 and 64 who were deemed to be at very high risk of getting, uh, adverse effects from the COVID vaccine. Uh, and there is a list of, uh, conditions that are included in that list. The expansion also included residents of homeless shelters, jails and detention facilities, utility workers, public transit, janitors and non-healthcare settings, and emergency short-term foster parents, uh, were included under the childcare, uh, sector. Uh, the conflicting information on the several state websites that I had mentioned last week was clarified by California Department of Public Health and additional guidance this week. And so we are in fact vaccinating those folks. Also last week, we did switch to the state's MyTurn application last Thursday. We did encounter some issues after the switch, but, uh, they weren't, uh, different from any other issues that any of the other counties are experiencing. The biggest issue that we encountered was user access. We identified that, uh, the folks that are at the OptumServe site across the street were able to see our clinic setups and possibly change them as well as we would have the ability to change theirs. So we contacted the state and we're asking them to shore all of this stuff up, uh, because we can't have, uh, each organization changing our respective clinics. That'll cause a ton of confusion. Uh, last week, between public health and OptumServe, we were able to vaccinate 2,361 individuals. That brings our total for Kings County residents vaccinated just over 28,000, uh, which is a good number. Uh, we did hold two large clinics for all eligible populations with an emphasis on agriculture farmers, ranchers, uh, this last Sunday in Corcoran and Avonale, where we administered 385 vaccines. Uh, these events were held at the Corcoran Rack and Reef Sunset Middle School in Avonale. Uh, I would like to thank Supervisor Valley, uh, JTO, HSA, Behavioral Health, Elections, the Ag Department, the Farm Bureau, and the United Farm Worker Foundation for assisting with the promotion and registration of these events, uh, and lending some staff to help run them. I'd also like to thank, uh, Hanford Fire as well as Kings County Fire providing staff to help vaccining or administer vaccines. We will be returning to these We will be returning to these locations for second dose appointments in this large-scale setting, but we are switching our model to run out of our clinics. In fact, starting today, which is Tuesday, our clinics in Hanford, Lemoore, Avonale, and Corcoran will operate five days a week. That is Sunday through Thursday, so this week they will be open today, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They'll be closed Friday and Saturday, but they'll open back up on Sunday, and they'll run that schedule from this point forward. Between us and the OptumServe site and Rite Aid and Walgreens and the other pharmacies that are providing the vaccine, that gives our county seven-day coverage with vaccine availability. As mentioned last week, by county council, the PPA MOU was finalized, and we did sign that. The state did hold a call very late last night where they discussed the changes to the allocation process and how they envisioned that working. It's pretty complicated, so I don't have a good grasp of it right now, but it won't be implemented until March 30th. So I'm going to do some clarification work today and be able to provide you a better report next Tuesday. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
A couple of questions for Mr. Hill. First of all, just a big thank you as well to him and his staff and everyone that he mentioned for their continued time and energy all over the county of Kings for this vaccine rollout. I do know that from working the traffic control and being right next to the registration and identifying people who showed up without appointments, I do know that we were able to, on the spot, same day, administer a vaccine to a lot of people at the Corcoran site. I mentioned that one because that's just where I was physically. I don't, I don't know if the data broke that down, but from, from just being on the ground, a lot of folks did show up last minute. These are folks who didn't have appointments, and they received their vaccine, so that, that's good right there. I know we all wish these numbers could be higher, so, you know, I think what would be helpful, and I, I know Mr. Hill's already working on this, but going through the data to find out, you know, did, you know, have we reached a point in this population in this tier of the people who want it, and, and are we now uphill, you know, with more people who just aren't interested in the vaccine at this time? Is there anything that warrants the county of Kings, you know, officially moving forward down the tier? The second part of that is that we saw that the testing, there was also testing taking place next door to the, the Corcoran vaccine event. County Health, County Health had staff there doing COVID-19 testing, and they provided an incentive for those who tested. There were subway gift cards and the amount of $10 for anyone who took the test. The question, Mr. Hill, is, is there anything that, along those lines, that, that he would be suggesting or moving forward on his own as it relates to any incentives offered to people, if that's legally allowed, Mr. Chair, offered to people to come, to come get their vaccine? So other than that, just a big thank you, and a really good job by everybody, and from hearing over 300 people vaccinated between Corcoran and Avonale, who came to Corcoran and Avonale on Sunday from all over the county, that's just good news and a positive no matter what. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Do you have any, any response you want to make? Or no?
Yeah. Thank you Supervisor Valley through the chair to address your questions. I don't have exact numbers for the amount of walk-up traffic that we ended up taking that day. Would like to point out that we were using the Moderna vaccine that day, which is much more stable and easier to handle in the walk-up situations. The Pfizer vaccine doesn't lend itself to that because it is completely frozen and takes 45 minutes to thaw. The Johnson and Johnson or the Jantin vaccine also has its own subtle nuances, such as the second, we open the top to vial, it has to be administered within so many hours, all the doses in the vial. So all of those lend challenges, but it's nice to know that we have that ability and can expand. And I'm just ballparking here, I think we, between the two clinics, we probably did an extra 100 doses to maybe 150 doses of just walk-up traffic, and that, the ability to do that does create some trouble for public health in the MITURN application, but these are all things that the state are aware of and that they're supposed to be helping us work on so that we have that freedom in the future. To address your question about the demand, it does seem like demand is decreasing, which I did not predict. We anticipated that with the March 15th expansion of eligibility, we thought demand would increase sharply, but it did not. So we are also not the only county that is experiencing that. Had a pretty long conversation with my fellow public health directors in the San Joaquin Valley yesterday, and we're likely going to see how this goes the rest of the week, and then we will likely start petitioning the state to broaden the eligibility moving forward. As we know, the current federal administration wants vaccines to be completely open by May 1st. Depending on what this administration in the state of California does, we may see that date happen sooner. It all depends on the decisions that government ops make and the new third-party administrators, they are kind of holding all the keys right now. When it comes to the incentives for testing, you're correct, we were giving $10 gift cards for those who tested. We plan on expanding that because the state will still require us to hit certain tests, certain testing numbers as we move forward, and our ELC, our Epidemiological Lab Capacity Grant specifically carves out funds for those incentives. However, there aren't currently incentives for vaccines at this time. The ELC funds are specifically for testing, contact tracing, things along those lines. We do anticipate another set of funds being administered to locals for vaccination only, but we have not had an update on those for a while, and they will likely include the opportunity for incentives for vaccines. I hope that addresses all of your questions.
No, it doesn't, and thank you, Mr. Hill, for that, and thanks for pointing out the number. It did feel, in Corcoran, it did feel like 100 people on the walk-up traffic, 150 between Corcoran and Avonale. That's, that's awesome, and I just want to point out that your staff that was doing the on-the-spot registration, that was a very exhausting process for them. We were sending them cars, just carloads of people who were pulling up, and your staff was out there with the iPads. They didn't even have time to get a drink of water, go use the bathroom. They were just register, register, registering, and that takes a lot of energy, so that, they should be recognized and pointed out for that. I wish I, I had all their names, but thank you to them if they're listening. Your work did not go unnoticed, has an awesome job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Director Hill or on the item in general? Okay, hearing none? That was me. So we'll move on to item seven, which is a study session, and Rebecca, you want to leave that off?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a study session. Last week, the county received notice that the Budget Appropriations Committee on the federal side and also the Transportation Infrastructure Committee adopted guidelines on federal earmarks. In the past, the county's been successful receiving earmarks under Congressman Jim Costa. So the date has returned where earmarks are back, and there is a short deadline to submit project requests. They're phrasing these as community project funding requests this year. I do have and want to introduce Paragon Government Relations, our federal lobbyists on the line. You can see that Mr. Joe Cron is up there on the screen, and also with him is Tom Joseph and Hassan Hassan. So welcome, Paragon representatives. And I passed out, I wanted to let the public know and the board know that I did pass out a working document. I was receiving requests even late last night, around midnight, and so we kind of gathered some feedback from the department heads on possibilities. We will need to evaluate these projects and bring them back for your board's consideration, but I wanted to let the public know that that will be submitted as part of the record as well. So with that, I would like to first introduce and open it up for Paragon to give us a Washington update. So Joe, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cron. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate that. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Great. Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, and thanks again to the, to the board for the opportunity, Beyante, to give a DC report, and thanks again, Rebecca, for her suggestions. I think it'll be helpful, given everything that's been going on in the nation's capital. As you said, I also have Tom Joseph and Hassan Hassan with me today. I think Tom is going to stay off camera. He might be having some connection issues. Hassan may, we may see his face in a moment or two. But in any case, let me kick things off. I'm going to start with the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, which is the sixth coronavirus relief package that Congress passed and was signed into law, so sixth bill going back to last March. All told now, Congress has approved over $5.5 trillion in COVID-19-related funding. That's all deficit spending, by the way. So again, that most recent bill, the American Rescue Plan Act, was signed into law just about a week ago. It's a nearly $1.9 trillion rescue and stimulus package. Rebecca, as you know, we provided a comprehensive memo and analysis of that particular piece of legislation. Again, it's extremely robust. There's a lot in that particular package. We won't go through all of the details today, although we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I will touch on a few highlights of the legislation, and as I think folks are aware, one of the big debates in Congress for this, this stimulus package that was just enacted was the idea of continued funding for states and local governments, tribes, and territories, basically general revenue sharing or COVID-19 fiscal aid again to those impacted governments. That was a hotly contested item on Capitol Hill. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the bill did include robust funding, actually for every county across the country, direct funding coming from the Department of the Treasury. Every, every city and municipality will be getting money from the American Rescue Plan Act, every state, again, territories and tribes also will be getting funds under this. Kings County is going to be receiving an estimated just under $30 million in, again, direct aid from the Treasury Department. That funding under the statute is supposed to go out from Treasury to all localities within 60 days. We'll see if they're going to be able to meet that aggressive target. In the meantime, Treasury is also developing some specific guidelines on the uses of funding. So, and the money, by the way, will be going out in two tranches. Again, the first one will go out, is supposed to go out in 60 days, and so the county will be getting half of the money in 60 days, and then under the legislation, under the law, I should say, the county would be getting the next installment of funding, the, the second half of that in a year, a year later from when the first tranche is, is released. The legislation does specify some, some of the uses of funding. It does say the money is available to respond to and mitigate the public health emergency as well as to address the negative economic consequences of COVID-19. The funds can be used to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue to the locality, sort of clumsy language that Congress included in the statute, so it's going to be interesting to see how the Treasury Department responds to that in the guidance that they'll be releasing, so exactly what those expenditures and allowable uses under that bullet point will be. The funds can be used for investments specifically in water, sewer, and broadband. Those were three specifically mentioned areas in the bill. There's some speculation that other infrastructure will be allowed via the Department of Treasury guidelines. Again, we're waiting on that. And then finally, the money can be used for premium pay to essential workers of the county, defined as up to an additional $13 an hour capped at $25,000 per eligible employee. And again, we'll expect some additional guidelines on that. A couple other things to mention on the parameters for this fiscal aid that's coming from the federal government. They do mention in terms of sort of responding to the health emergency and negating negative economic impacts. They do mention that local governments would be able to send money to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries that have been impacted by COVID-19, including specifically tourism. So that is also mentioned. The other thing is, we are aware that our Mona Community Services District and others have asked about, you know, availability of funding under the law. Congress stopped short of providing a separate allocation for special districts. However, the law does build and transfer authority for both states and local governments to transfer funds to special districts. So that transfer authority is there, and if the county so wishes to, you can, you can choose to transfer money to Services District within the county, and you can decide on the amount of funding that would be going, again, to a, to a special district. So that also is a part of that package. I'll just say this, that, that's kind of garnered a lot of the attention, obviously, in the county world, is that direct fiscal aid. It's a very robust package, as I said, almost $1.9 trillion. Clearly, there is a strong public health component to the new law, as there has been with all of the previous coronavirus relief bills. There's also a significant amount of funding for many other county priorities and county programs in the area of human services, supportive services, behavioral health, mental health, homelessness, housing. The list is rather long. Again, this is all embodied in the summary that we provided to the county. We do expect, you know, some of these dollars to start rolling out now in the coming weeks and months as other departments, you know, release guidance and/or allocations for this funding. So we will be, you know, working with you as, as the funding is rolled out. I'll turn it over to my colleagues to mention anything else on the Rescue Plan that, that may be of relevance. Hassan, if you want to talk about the leave credits, and then of course, we're, we're happy to take questions as well.
Sure. One thing, actually, I'll just build on what Joe was saying. The money is, it's supposed to be flexible, it's supposed to be broad. So we're going to have to wait and see, though, what Treasury comes out with, and I know there's been a number of questions, and NACO's actually compiled a lot of questions from across the country, submitted those to Treasury, and we're expecting them to put out some kind of frequently asked question, document. And I know Rebecca mentioned the paid leave earlier, under one of the previous COVID bills, there was a mandate to provide paid sick leave and family and medical leave. There was a tax credit, a dollar-for-dollar tax credit that was available to the private sector, but it was not available to counties. This bill would actually expand upon that and make that dollar-for-dollar tax credit available to public agencies, including counties. So that's big, and there is no longer a mandate to provide that leave, so it's more of an incentive for employers. There's also a number of extensions in the unemployment world. There is a $300 benefit added on top of traditional unemployment benefits that was extended through the first week in September that was included in the bill. There's also additional weeks of unemployment that were tacked on to some of the other expansions. And that's it. I know from the employment world, maybe Tom might want to go over some of the public health components?
Thank you, Hassan. Yeah, this is, this is Tom again. There's, as there has been in previous COVID packages, additional support for vaccine administration and distribution, additional support for testing with respect to nutrition, a continuation of the 15% increase in the CalFresh benefit, which amounts to about $27 per individual per month. That increase will extend through September 30th. And also another robust package of emergency rental assistance. Treasury is developing the guidelines for that, as with many other programs within this, within this package. And I'll, I'll close with that.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you so much for the updates, and any questions by the board?
I do have some additional presentation.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay, so just wanted to introduce your board to some of the projects, ideas that the department heads have submitted, and this would be back to the earmark discussion. So I just want to briefly highlight them, and you could kind of follow along on that working document that I gave to you. So I did, from administration, put on the Juvenile Center remodel upgrade. We do have a gap in funding there, and so I would work with Paragon Government Relations to see if that even falls into one of the federal categories and guidelines, but that I wanted to put on there because the county will need to fill that gap from somewhere. From Community Development Agency, the local road improvement infrastructure for the Jackson infrastructure for the Jackson Ranch project, there are is it's it's a large infrastructure project going out on Interstate 5 in Utica. Mr. Gadska has presented before the board on this project. So this could be a really good transportation project that could go before the feds. From the District Attorney's Office, we did discuss this, the when we brought our federal legislative platform and state platform. This is the Family Justice Center project. This is also a really good project. It would include pretrial diversion, immigration assistance, bringing all services together in one place, addressing sex trafficking, victims, assistance, foster assistance, all in one place. And so that is the goal there. That's also a really good project. From the Fire Department, our Emergency Operations Center building is getting old and wearing down. That could be a viable project. There is a section under those guidelines for that. From Human Services Agency, construction of a non-congregate low-barrier shelter. Right now, the county is providing that with through Project Room Key, but that is temporary. And this funding request would be something more permanent for the county. Okay, and then from Public Works, there's a pedestrian bridge spanning across State Route 41 near General Petroleum Avenue in Kettelman City, and it would replace a an at-grade crosswalk. So everybody's hopefully driven through there and seeing that area. And then from the Sheriff's Office, there's two ideas. There are body cameras for the deputy sheriffs. That would be more, it could possibly be more competitive, a smaller project request. And also, a larger request through the Sheriff's Office would be phase four of the jail to help offenders with rehabilitation and program space. What I do is envision coming back, because we are on a tight timeline, and it will be recommended to select two projects. The Congressman Valadeo will have 10 total projects for his whole district to submit. It's going to be extremely competitive. So I would recommend that your board consider two project requests, and I'll bring those back for your board once we go through the details and figure out what would be qualifying. And if there's anything to add, Mr. Cron, to ensure that I covered it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. Yeah, actually, perfect. You encapsulated most of what we would say. The one thing I would just do with your permission is just give a quick two minutes on earmarks, just sort of the background. And as folks, you know, are probably aware, this will be the first year in a decade that Congress will be bringing earmarks back. As Rebecca indicated, they're calling them community project funding. So they're, Congress is rebranding district, or excuse me, rebranding earmarks, bringing them under a new process. There's going to be additional reporting criteria and sort of different reforms that they're bringing back as part of this year's process. So incidentally, a lot of the members on Capitol Hill and staff, for that matter, haven't been through the earmarking process. As a firm, we certainly have done so in the past. I would say that this is sort of like, you know, not your father's earmarking process. It's going to look very different. We're already seeing some some hiccups with, you know, short deadlines. And in fact, the House Appropriations Committee was supposed to do a training, two trainings this week for Hill staff, which they've since canceled. So it's a little bit of growing pains as they roll out this this, again, new earmarking process, which which hasn't been around Capitol Hill in 10 years. As Rebecca indicated, I think sort of the message from individual members of Congress is it's going to be extremely competitive. Under the guidelines that have been released by the Appropriations Committee, only 1% of the total federal budget would be allowed to be earmarked. Again, as Rebecca said, each member would get a chance to submit up to 10 projects, but with no guarantee, really, that any of those would necessarily be funded by the committee. There are different stipulations and guidelines for each of the each of the projects, and we're going to work with all of you on that. I think Rebecca's advice is good as far as, you know, probably wanting to prioritize your top couple of earmarks. And certainly, if this process stays in place as we go, I think there'll be additional opportunities to secure secure direct funding from the federal government. But at this point in time, given the new process and the stipulations on that, I think it is probably a wise idea to to really hone in and prioritize the the projects that you'd like to seek through through your your member of Congress, who does, by the way, sit on the Appropriations Committee. I'll just say this as a wrap up. The Senate is still deciding what to do on earmarks. We fully anticipate that Senate Democrats will bring that process back. I know Republicans in the Senate are talking about whether or not they would fully participate in the earmarking process. But presumably, there will be an opportunity also to submit earmarks through your senators as well, and we'll be working with you on that. So we're happy to take any any questions on the new community project funding as well. Thank you.
Great, Joe. Thank you. Hey, with respect to earmarks, and I've been around long enough to have lived through that, you know, was always very powerful and, you know, a real positive for bipartisanship, you know, with a regional kind of basis. And, you know, while I understand we would send Valadeo our wish list, it should probably be beyond that to build enough support. I mean, that's what it took to get it on, you know, get it into the budget was, you know, a regional support that came from multiple directions. And I just made some comments on that.
Mr. Chairman, I think your instincts are right on that. I think anytime you're able to bring additional political pressure to bear, if there's, you know, additional stakeholders that can be brought in that are going to support that. In fact, that's one of the, you know, one of the directions from the Appropriations Committee is to be able to display community support. And better yet, if you're able to get regional support outside of the county. So if there are bigger regional projects you want to go in on, absolutely, I think that's that's going to be the way to go on on these things. So yeah, I think your I think your instincts are right on.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know we had a hand raised out there with our DA, DA Fagunas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. I did want to underscore what Ms. Campbell mentioned about the Family Justice Center. This is not a project that we just thought of in response to the request for earmarks, the project that's been brewing in our office for about two years now. And we visited the Family Justice Center in Merced, and we're visiting the Family Justice Center in Kern. And what we've realized is that Kings County has always been at the forefront of providing services to the community, and our victims are no different. We changed the model of child advocacy a couple of years ago with our victim-centric center that identifies the need in real time with all the services at hand to give need immediately. And we want to take that same project with victims generally in the county, but not just victims, but their families, and not just victims' families, but also families in the community dealing with addiction and families dealing with other people in the system who have problems. So that this facility would encompass prefiling diversion, keeping people completely out of the criminal justice system in our jails. It would deal with diverting people who are homeless into the right places to either reconnect them with their families or other services, so that we would actually need less homeless shelters and less transitory shelters for the homeless, as we would really be getting to the root of the problem and diverting homeless to the places where they can get help that is sustainable. And so I won't spend too much time. I would love an invitation to come back and do a full study session with the board and really explain to you why this is an important project at the time is due. For six years, I've been lobbying for Corcoran, Avonel, the Sheriff's Department projects and everything else in Sacramento. And we've really shown that our Victims of Crime Act funding goes to good use. And we can turn this money to good use as well. And with your support, this can be a truly community event that is going to bring all of our services and everything we do well in the county together. So I would, before any decisions are made, I would really think that the Family Justice Center is the next move. As I've said, the nearest Family Justice Center in our region is in Merced in Kern County. So we can really be a beacon of hope for a lot of families. And I know that it's a worthwhile project. So with your support, I'd love to see it on the earmark list this time. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for comments and look forward to that project. Madam Clerk, do we have other folks that wish to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay. Board member questions further?
So what what's our timeline on this?
Well, as of yesterday, we have till the 31st of March.
Oh, so we need to get on it.
So next week, we need to make a decision.
Very good. And are we working with anybody to get an idea? You work with the Congressman staff to understand what may or may not work, so we can get you chosen?
I would defer to Mr. Cron on that one.
We are indeed supervisor. Thank you for the question. Yes, we are. We are working with them. And I think your instincts on that are right, too, is is a big question is, you know, what is your member of Congress's priority on this? And of course, you know, he would have the ultimate discretion as far as what he would want to submit. And as we indicated at the outset, surely Mr. Valadeo will be getting, you know, earmark requests from across his district. And that would include, you know, the counties, the cities, and the nonprofits would all have an opportunity to approach him to ask for earmarks. And he'll be limited to seeking 10. So we are working with him on that. And we will provide you and through Rebecca some additional direction regarding, you know, his likely priorities.
Thank you. I'll just I'll just add real quick that so their internal deadline is the 31st. So that is next Wednesday. The Appropriations Committee has pushed back their deadline to submit proposals to mid-April. And we've seen several other members kind of push back their their timeline as well. We've asked the Congressman staff about that. They're they're still sticking with their their March 31 deadline. But especially with this other class or instruction on the earmark process being canceled, maybe they'll consider pushing this back. So we might have additional time. Not clear yet, but as of now, we're still working within this kind of one-week timeframe to get projects in.
Great. Thank you. Further questions by the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two points. One of them, one of them is, first of all, thank you to our federal lobbyists for taking the time. This is great, great use of time. Really appreciate the information and the presentation. You answered one of the concerns I just emailed. Can't remember who I emailed yesterday. I think I it was Rebecca, and I copied the Kettelman City Community Services Director, Rosa Maldonado. She has reached out to me, Mr. Chairman. The Home Garden CSD has reached out. And that's the question right now. The question of the day is, how could they expect some relief, right? The COVID laws allow people to not make their water payments. And these CSDs are reporting that they're they're missing a lot of revenue. The money's not coming in, and they don't know if they're ever going to get made home. So that is a very big concern, Mr. Chairman. So if we have, if you get consensus from the board, Mr. Chair, if we could direct staff to reach out to Armona, Home Garden, Stratford, Kettelman City, and get their total, that would be good information for the board for us to know, because it sounds like we just learned that as that money would come to the county of Kings, then we have the ability to transfer those monies to those CSDs, which which are Kings County, obviously. So we could we could help them out and make our our fiscal health all around the county stronger, Mr. Chairman, as we're helping small businesses, doing a great job on that. I think we should take some time and consider helping out these municipalities as well. The second point, Mr. Chairman, goes to the earmark process. And there are some good projects here. But when we talk priority, I think one of the things we need to look at, Mr. Chair, is the time on the record. And I know that even before I was seated in January of 2009, and I would ask Rebecca and staff to pull out this information, prior to being seated, there are longtime requests and concerns coming out of the Kettelman City area for the lack of safety on that Highway 41 crossing. As we know, Mr. Chairman, Kettelman City is split by that highway. And so multiple times during the school year, all around the year, for that matter, we have young children crossing that highway to get to school, to get back home from school. It's very dangerous. All of my 13 years here, that concern has never stopped coming to the county. That is a high-profile concern that we have been put on notice about. Not only that, the county's response back to the community of Kettelman City has been the lack of earmarks is preventing us from doing something about it. Because the other thing we'd have to do is reach into the County General Fund, and we know where that is. So, Mr. Chairman, this is an excellent opportunity. I think without question, this is something that we have to step to the plate to, to team up as a county for one for the one of two projects to submit to Congressman Valadeo. I think a really good, strong show of support is something that we need. I'm going to reach out to the school district. As soon as this meeting's over, I'm going to reach out to Kettelman City leadership, those elected CSD members, and advise them that they need to be vocal on this opportunity. They should help the county. They should submit support for this. But we can't have that, Mr. Chairman. It's this is a $2 million, what I'm what we're being told, $2 million price tag. And if it could come from outside the county budget, even better. I'll close with this. Back in 2010, myself, Mr. Bob Lewis, some other Kettelman City leaders, we spent a couple of weeks where we physically volunteered. And we were out there early in the morning. We held that stop sign. We played crosswalk guard for the for the day. And I personally crossed kids across that highway. It's very scary as an adult to stand there in the middle of the highway with the red stop sign, hoping that diesel truck is going to stop. Two yellow lines for a crosswalk on that highway, we know is still scary, does not alleviate the problem. That overpass is long overdue. It could save lives. And and to do it without us having to put a fiscal impact on the county budget is just something we can't pass up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, I think it needs to be a coordinated effort as well that, you know, I mean, there is some responsibility on these districts as well. There is state money available. So, you know, possibly looking at some kind of shared responsibility. And and Joe, is there a what was the number to the state?
Oh, in terms of the coronavirus relief funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're in line to get roughly $26 billion. And so they and they also will have, again, that that transfer authority as well, something to keep in mind. And I think my understanding is some of the special districts are, you know, planning to go to their local governments, but also to the state. And in talking with some folks in Sacramento, I do understand that the state is preparing, you know, given the amount of money that they're getting, there may be opportunities for for transfer of funds there as well. One other thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just want to mention, in addition to the ability to transfer funds to special districts, there's also that program that Tom had touched on through the Department of the Treasury that provides rental and utility bill assistance payments. So that might be another opportunity. I know that there's there's issues with individuals being able to pay for, you know, their utility bills during COVID. So that Department of Treasury program is separate and apart from the direct fiscal aid. So there's that opportunity along with the transfer authority that could be used to help the districts. And again, we've provided information to Rebecca just to make sure that you're aware of all the different opportunities that are there that you could tap into.
This this is Tom, just to add on to Joe with respect to our utility assistance. We have not yet seen the guidelines, but under the law income home energy assistance program, there is a new program for for payment individuals that have not been able to pay their their water or or other utility bills. So there are a number, a number of funding flows, but some of them have not yet been developed in in full.
I would add that also under the state, I was I'm still researching it because they haven't come out with the guidelines the last time I checked. But they're also have a program for utility assistance and rental assistance through Housing and Community Development Agency. So that would be another opportunity. I just have to double check to see if those are federal dollars routing through the state, or if it's directly coming from the state. So there's still a number of questions on this topic. But it looks like that the county will have lots of opportunity.
Rebecca, would you be Rebecca, would you be willing to help? And if we could work with with Joe and and some of the the members of the our our federal team, setting up a Zoom and inviting the directors from all of those county CSDs to at least get on one Zoom call, get this information. I agree, it's very confusing. If there's other opportunities for them to seek money besides reaching out directly to the county, I think that's helpful to them. But I think that just benefits all of us, not just not just our county budget, but just the county as a whole. Is that something you'd be willing to work on?
Absolutely, if the board directs me to do so. Thank you.
Okay. And if not, I'm happy to do it myself, and I'd reach out to the lobbyists. But, Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion for that? Or is that something you could ask the board? If they'd be fine with having staff work and do do that with the CSDs?
Mr. Chairman, that could be done by consensus.
Okay. Well, I do have a comment on that with respect to that. I think that it would be even more I, I think that it would be even more helpful if we got both our assembly member and our state senator on this thing as well. As, as you know, Joe has said, I think regional approaches to this are going to be important. And, you know, just hearing from us isn't going to be the, the end all be all. And, and it should be a coordinated effort between us and the state officials as well. But.
I think that's a great idea.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to Supervisor Valley's point with all the different funding streams, because there are a lot of them. My understanding is the California Special Districts Association is developing or may have some materials that would be very, very useful for their members that we can, we could send out. And, and by the way, we're absolutely happy to do a Zoom session and, and talk everyone through this. In the meantime, assuming those resources are available, that might be something that would be useful for them to have in hand. So they can kind of get an idea of what's been approved and, and some of those parameters. So we'll, we'll be sure to get ahold of that and provide that to Rebecca for distribution.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Further comments, questions by the board?
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of other observations, Rebecca, and, and maybe not Kings County, but the more regional approach. And the one is transportation, especially with the NPO designation going away and some of those changes. Even though they say there's not going to be any reduced funding, well, then don't change the designation. Leave it alone. You know, it always bothers me when they say nothing's going to change other than your name. It just lends me to believe something's going to change somewhere. So one way or another. So transportation, especially public transportation, the fare box ratio. They've addressed it on the short term, but I think this is going to take a, a longer term recovery. And so have some longer language in some of those public transportation fare box ratio guidelines. And then the other is the groundwater recharge projects. As a county, we have several mini groundwater management agencies working on plans. As a county, we don't have a lot of individual projects, but we do have parks, we do have wells, we do have groundwater, stormwater retention basins that do provide recharge. And by working on a regional basis, the installation of meters, the installation of monitoring wells, the installation of, of projects that we have done traditionally and historically and legacy wise, but we haven't monitored. And so to be able to add a monitoring component to what we're already doing to try to take credit for that. That, that support for special districts is great news. Special districts does have their own organization and they are pushing for a lot of that. Some of the other special districts, whether they be recreation, mosquito abatement, some of the other solid waste issues are, are, there are many, many special districts that are, really don't have a coordinated effort. And so anything that we can do to work with those many different special district, local governments that are providing services would be greatly appreciated. And again, not, not necessarily from a county level, but I think we probably should look at that from a regional area, because I think communities like Tulare County, Fresno County, Kern County all have a very, varied amount of issues, but they're all pretty much the same issues. And so I think a regional approach at that and, and trying to go after the state money would be time well spent. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. And I, I think it'll be, we'll probably need some clarification on water districts and things of those nature as to if that is an applicable use of, you know, the recovery funds or not, but that, that can all be done. So, so is there consensus by the board and, and furthering the investigation as was outlined, I think by Supervisor Valley and others? If you could, by voice?
Yes, sir.
Rest of the board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Not being in the, in, in the chamber, it sounds like we have consensus.
Mr. Chair, do, Mr. Chair, do you have support for that?
I, I do as well, yes.
And Supervisor Verboon, do you have support for a coordinated meeting for the Community Services District?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I think sometimes it, it falls on your own business to pay attention to your own business, not let someone do it for you. I know some of these districts don't, don't want involvement from us unless we start giving them money. So, you know, I just have some concerns. But yeah, we can have that discussion. I'm not against it. You know, we go back to the water, the water deal. And, you know, we would like to monitor the wells and make sure they are bad meters. But then we want to have a water policy, then they don't want us involved with it. Once we have money, they, they'll, they'll want us to be involved. So I, yeah, I have some concern. We can talk about it. But let's put it on a short timeframe here. So we got to get it going within seven days. So I think we choose from our list and then work with our, our staff and see what, what the rules are. And stay within the rules, stay in our lane and try to get the two projects awarded to us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I want to thank the board for all of your comments. We're dealing with two separate things here. Next week I will be bringing back the earmark requests. And then a lot of your comments today were based on the new federal package for COVID-19. So I envision bringing back a study session on that at a later date. We do have some time on that. So we can go ahead and schedule that Zoom meeting and do some more research on the, and, and receive additional guidelines from the Department of Treasury. And once we're ready, we'll bring back a study session to talk about the American Rescue Plan, which is what a lot of the discussion was focused on today. But next week I will certainly bring back the earmark requests so that your board can make a decision on which two projects we would like to submit for that.
Yeah. And it may be worth, you know, just reaching out as well to, you know, our regional counterparts. I mean, if, if there is a coordinated, you know, I mean, just checking in with Fresno and Tulare County as to, you know, regional projects that they're vital to all of us and just a thought process, but a thought. Any further, Madam Clerk, do we have any further requests for comment?
We do not.
Okay. Any further comment by the board?
So many.
Hey, real quickly, again, thanks to Joe Hassan and, and Tom. You guys always do a wonderful job. And, and I know this year we didn't get a chance to make it back to Washington to make our rounds. And, but I know you're covering it for us, hopping that fence and making your way into the Capitol. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we appreciate that. And yeah, we, again, thanks to the, to the board for the opportunity to be on today. We, we look forward to continuing these discussions. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay. That concludes our study session and, and that is the, pretty much the end of the agenda with respect to action items. So we'll move to board member announcements. Supervisor Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, again, just going back to the vaccine rollout. I was looking at the data here this morning, updated data. I, I put this information out on social media the other day. But when it comes to who's getting the vaccine in Kings County, women are in the number one spot, 55%. Women account for 55% of all the, of those who've received the vaccine. And the County of Kings counted to the 44.6% of men who so far received the COVID vaccine. And so kudos to the women there leading the way. Also, I'm happy here as we looked at the data, everything we went through from the COVID pandemic starting. The data showing Latinos with the, representing the number one spot for infections and the death rate in the County of Kings. That when you look at the overall makeup of who's receiving the vaccine by ethnicities, Latinos lead the way at 41.1%. That's a lot of hard work, blood, sweat and tears to get to that. And I want to give a lot of that credit to Mr. Hill and his staff in their strategy and the rollout and the equity of this vaccine coming out at this point in the pandemic. I do want to thank a world champion, Jose Ramirez, for his efforts yesterday. You may have read, Vida Navia did the story. I saw some news reports. He held a press conference yesterday at Wonderful, the Wonderful Company on Lost Hills. And he stood before a lot of farm workers and before those cameras. And he urged that farm worker community and population to, you know, take a look at some of the information that's out there versus some of the disinformation out there as it relates to these vaccines. And he urged them to receive the vaccine. And, and, and so I thank him for that. He's always been a true champion in, inside and outside of the ring. He proved that again yesterday. And on that note, a happy belated Jose Ramirez Day in Kings County. As you know, we voted, we declared March 17th is Jose Ramirez Day in Kings County. That being the date that he won his belt, his world titles. And so I wanted to point that out as I missed that during the week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Nev?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a meeting last week and discussed the hemp ordinance. Supervisor Verboon joined us. I, I had, I thought I had several objections and several changes. At the end of the day, I think it looks like there's only going to be one major change to that ordinance. And we'll move forward with those changes in, in future meetings. Calviva, we had both finance and, and board meeting, regular board meeting. At the finance, we, we had to have three different assumptions. State of California is still not very for letting a lot of information come through on the pharmacy carve out. And so we had to have a, three different budgets. One with a pharmacy takeover in July, a pharmacy takeover in January of, of 2022, and then no takeover. So we, we, we had to go, go through and have those three different budget assumptions. We also very reluctantly accepted Greg Hunn's retirement schedule and offered the position to Jeff, who, who's also a member of the management team at Calviva. And I've not heard on that, but I'm, I'm fairly confident that he will assume that role July 1st. The South Fort Kings GSA received meetings, updates on all the projects that we are. Unfortunately, we were not able to receive funding on, on one of the bigger projects. There were 17 different proposals. Only five were funded. We came within a couple of points on the scoring, but we were not successful. So we'll move on and, and, and try to regroup and reapply next year. Also had the pleasure of attending the Portuguese Beyond Borders Institute Symposium hosted by Fresno State. They have done a week long series of Zoom and Facebook Live connections to Valley communities for, in the Azorian community as well as the mainland Portugal. And it's, it's been pretty neat to watch. The Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting yesterday, we were able to establish a quorum. We were able to receive all the informations and some new information on the tele psychiatry. They continue to work within their own network as broadband network that is more secure and, and more able to meet the needs of, of the medical community. And really looking forward to watching that program expand and become more and more available throughout Kings County. We also had, because of COVID, we weren't able to attend the, the Kings Building remodel project at Kingsview. But we were able to watch it virtually and photographs. And certainly want to thank staff that did that. I know Anchung put a lot of work into that as well as Katie to ensure that that project was done. Remodels are very difficult. They were able to pull that off remarkably well within the environment that we're living today. And then wrap up just with several nonprofit organizations that I'm involved with as well as service clubs. They seem to be moving into a post-COVID era of operations. Some of them are returning to some level of in-person activity starting May 1st with continued support from the Centers of Disease Control Recommendations for in-person gatherings. And those are both indoor and outdoor guidelines. And so it's, and, and many of those have been published literally this month, earlier in March. So looking forward to some kind of a return to, again, it's not going to be the normal we were used to before March of last year, but some kind of operational activities, both inside and outside gathering. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Pragundas?
Yeah, Craig, last week I had the mission on aging and it's just to continue returning, returning shore to feed people that are homeless and, 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 well, not so much the homeless, but the elderly, some of their families. And the funding is short, getting shorter, and also the numbers are escalating considerably. If we could do something to help on that side of the coin, I really appreciate all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Verboon.
Yeah, a couple of things I can add to that. You know, we talked about the hemp ordinance the other day with Supervisor Nev and County Council Lee Burdick and Jimmy Hook. I think it was pretty good. We talked about an hour, went through some concerns and discussed it. Also on Friday morning, had the San Juanquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority meeting. I said to the vice chair on that. Not much going on. We're not going to, you know, we turned over the project to another entity, which they're not going to apply for the funding. So we still had to keep our group together so we could stay as, as one. I think we got nine members on that, on that board. Our budget is getting pretty low. We're not putting money into it. We got about $6,000 at a bank. Our audit is going to be 2,100. So we may have to put a little bit of money in there between nine people. It will be very much be under, you know, $400, $500. So that'll probably come to the board here shortly. And that's all I got. So thank you. Why I gave blood on St. Patty's Day is I gave green blood. So we're good.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Now, I don't have much, but I, I did want to go back to Ms. Massey's comments earlier during the, the public comment period. And, and I just want to say that I'm proud of our board for giving this the time that it deserved, that specific issue, the thoughtful process that was, went through to come to a decision. And, you know, to, to really have that, that challenging discussion about race and diversity and, and the challenges with social media. And as we come through this process, you know, I'm just proud of the board and, and the progress that we continue to, to look forward to making with respect to this issue. And, and even more importantly, I think the discussions, you know, I, I always pride myself on going out and checking my decision process and, and had some wonderful, wonderful discussions after, after that process. And, and, you know, it just creates a better understanding of today's world and the challenges that we all face. And, and so, you know, as Chair, I just want to give you my commitment that we gave, you know, solid time to the, the challenging issue and, and a commitment to, to do better in the future. And, and through changes in, in how the, the, the county conducts itself in the public and, and the public eye is, is vital to, you know, our process and, and most importantly, serving the people of our community. And so again, I want to thank the board for, you know, their professional process and going through that and, and coming to a decision. And with that, I.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would you just allow me 10 seconds? I promised 10 seconds, no longer. With you, I didn't know that that was appropriate to bring that up, but since you did, you kind of put me in a spot. So I just want to make my brief statement. And my brief statement, per my abstaining vote, which I got some concern over, I just want to say very briefly that I do not agree with any decision that, that did not include termination effective immediately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Great note to end on. Thanks. With that, we will move to adjournment and.
Mr. Chair?
We have, yes, ma'am.
Would you like me to go over?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sorry. Yep.
Thank you.
Tried to cut you out.
No, it's okay. Just a couple of items in correspondence. We have biennial inspection notices from the Board of State. No, it's okay. Uh, just a couple of items in correspondence. We have biennial inspection notices from the Border State and Community Corrections regarding our main jail facility, the courthouse, and also the juvenile center and, uh, camp program. From MBK Engineers, a Conway Preservation Group petition for change involving water transfer. Upcoming meetings and events. A reminder that the California Central Blood Drive will be March 26th. That's this upcoming Friday from nine to one in the parking lot by Lacy Boulevard. In May their drive. Upcoming agenda items. These are all coming next week and their plan to come next week. From administration, the COVID-19 update employee of the quarter. And a Kings County Library Advisory Board appointment. And also we will bring the federal earmark community project requests for, for consideration again. Also from the ag commissioner, a cooperative agreement with the California Department of Food and Ag for the county's pink bollworm cotton plow down and host free monitoring program. District Attorney will bring a number of their grants, and these are continuation requests to participate in those grant programs. From the information technology agreement, uh, department will have a megabyte systems amendment number one and also a purchase of endpoint security suite item. From Human Services Agency, there's a couple of items and this would be an agreement renewal for jump technology for adult protective services. And also they will recognize social worker appreciation month proclamation. Thank you. And that's it.
Great. Okay. I think now we've reached that, uh, terminal moment in the meeting process where, uh, we do not have a close, a closed session today. And so at this point, uh, if there's no further information to come for the board, we will, uh, move to adjournment and, uh, to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is, uh, March 30th, 2021 at 9:00 AM. And we do have a following meeting that we're a little bit about 11 minutes late for, which is the, uh, California Public, uh, Housing Authority, I believe, whatever it is called, but, uh, thank you.
Did a new link go out for us?
No, sir. We're staying on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, with that, thanks for everyone, uh, joining the meeting today and, uh, look forward to next week. So, uh, uh, with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You going to take a break, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, however long it takes everyone to get set up there.
Okay.
How long do you need, uh, Catherine?
Looks like they're muted, sir.
Hey, guys, Scott's on.
Awesome. So in the, in the chamber, do we need to, uh, can we roll or you need some more time? Anybody hear me?
Cal CHA is ready to go.
Is it ready to go? Okay. We're, we're, we're recording whenever you're ready.
All right, let's rock and roll. All right. Today is, uh, Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And, uh, this is the, uh, regularly scheduled meeting of the California Community Housing Agency. And, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, conduct roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Joe Nev.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Yeah.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, very good. We have, uh, five present and, uh, we'll move to item two, which is approval of the minutes of the is it?
I'll move it presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, five in favor. Thank you. And we will move on now to the consent calendar. Um, you have those items before you. How would the board like to move forward with us?
Nev's moved to adopt the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Right, we have a motion and second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, five in favor on that item. We'll move to item four, which is new business and item A. And Scott, you want to take this one?
Yes, happy to, you guys. So thanks again. Uh, we're back here. We got another new opportunity which we're excited about. So Couch has been approached to acquire, uh, Mira Vista Hills Apartments. This is a 280 unit multifamily rental housing facility. It's in Antioch. Uh, Mira Vista Hills actually currently has an existing regulatory agreement on the property. Where at least 20% of the units are to be rented to tenants whose incomes do not exceed 80% of the median gross income. So Couch is going to come in and, and keep that regulatory agreement in place. And then we're also going to impose income and rent restrictions on the balance of the additional units to, uh, households earning no more than 120% of the area median income. So kind of fold this into our middle income housing program. So Mira Vista Hills, they currently have 216 one bedrooms and 64 two bedrooms. I've gone out and toured the property and it looks like a great asset for a portfolio. Uh, you guys just, uh, you know, a traditional buyer would probably come in since that existing regulatory agreement is due to expire soon. They'd probably look at, you know, a new buyer would come in and look at this as a value add opportunity to go in and remove, you know, these affordable affordability restrictions that are in place and look to increase rents. But again, we aren't a traditional buyer. So Couch is going to come in and we're not only going to preserve and expand the existing affordability that's in place today, but we're also going to protect the existing households who are currently living there from threat of displacement. So another pretty cool thing for, for Couch to come in and kind of keep these affordability restrictions in place. So Couch is being asked to consider issuance of 110 million of governmental purpose bonds to acquire this project. Upon acquisition, Couch is going to enter into a property management agreement with Gray Star. Gray Star is going to handle the day-to-day property operations. We're also going to enter into a project administration agreement with Catalyst Housing. Catalyst is, uh, is the group that's bringing us this opportunity today. Uh, again, you guys, you know, the public benefits of the program, you know, we're going to acquire this. We're going to put in our middle income housing restrictions uh, to limiting it to households that at or below 120% of AMI. We're going to put in a regulatory agreement that's going to restrict, uh, a third of those units at 80, a third at 100 and a third at 120. Again, we're not going to have any sort of, uh, non-displacement policy. We're not going to be kicking anyone out. And then also Couch will grant excess project revenues to the underlying jurisdiction, which is the city of Antioch. And we're actually on the agenda tonight with the city to have them join Couch as well as the Couch program. We've been in numerous conversations with the cities. They're excited about the program and we have no, uh, you know, reservations about being on the agenda tonight. We think it's going to go great and, you know, get, get the approvals that are needed. So again, any sort of approval by Couch's board today will be submitted to the city of Antioch, uh, joining Couch and approving, uh, tonight. Um, and then again, you guys, just like all other deals, uh, you know, same structures in place here. We have all the same protections, no liability, uh, et cetera. So I'm happy to have another, uh, opportunity in getting Antioch on board. So that's it. You can take questions if the board has any.
Very good. Uh, any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21 dash 048.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments on the item?
We do not.
Okay, very good. Uh, why don't we go ahead and call a roll then, please?
Joe Nev.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Great. We have five in favor. Let's move to the next item, item B.
Uh, yeah, they, I, Mike, Mike stuck on another call, so he was, he's unable to make it today. So I'll go ahead and cover this one. So you guys may recall Anandale Apartments in Santa Rosa. This was our first financing we did for, uh, this middle income housing program back in kind of early, uh, 2019. Uh, this project is still struggling a little bit, so we are going to inject some more cash into this project. Uh, we're going to release some additional funds from the extraordinary expense fund, another 250,000. Uh, Catalyst Housing, who's our project administrator, is also going to put in another 250,000. Um, again, this should hopefully kind of inject the project and really get us kind of on the, on the path towards being successful here. Uh, we also do have some additional reserves, but we're not going to tap those at the moment because we're going to kind of put this cash flow note into the project around 500,000. Couch is also owed an annual administration fee in April of 150,000. And to continue to kind of help this project, we're going to delay that payment to later this year. Um, and then we're also looking to refinance this. And we can refi and probably build up some additional reserves. Again, we did this financing kind of early of 2019. Interest rates are a lot lower now than they were then. So it makes all the sense in the world to kind of refinance this deal and then we'll really, you know, put this thing on a, on a good path to being really successful and a great project in our portfolio. So we want to make you guys aware, um, we think this is obviously going to be the last time we're going to have to do this. Uh, but again, we do think this is much needed. We want to stand behind these projects and, and make sure they continue to be successful. So that's it for this item and can take questions if the board has me.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Uh, questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21 dash 058.
Second.
Right, uh, we have a motion and second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nev.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, five in favor on that issue. Uh, thanks again, Scott. And, uh, at this time we'll move to item five, which is public comment. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda, on other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for, excuse me, five or for each, uh, item. Do we have any public comment?
Chairman Peterson, we do not have anyone with their hand raised or a request to speak under unscheduled.
Okay, thank you. Uh, back to Scott. Do we have any updates you want to share with us or are we good?
No, we don't, you guys. Again, this program continues to grow. Um, there's a couple of other opportunities that we've been approached with. Um, again, we're continuing as staff to kind of flesh those out to make sure they're fits, but, um, no, that no other updates at this time.
Right, very good. Thank you. Uh, all right. Any further, uh, discussion or information coming for the board at this time?
Hey, Mr. Chair, can you just, uh, have IT look into the camera in the chambers? It used to be on a landscape. We'd be able, the public could see from where you sit all the way to Sue Nev. But, um, lately it's only showing Sue Verboon and Sue Fagundes like it's in a portrait mode instead of landscape. Maybe we can improve that for, uh, next Tuesday.
Okay, we will, uh, work on that as well. Right, any, uh, other comments? Okay, uh, hearing none, then at this point we will, uh, adjourn to our next, uh, scheduled meeting, which I'm not sure when is, but, uh, it will be the next one.
Thanks again, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Because it says phone? Okay.
I was, I was going to say, it actually looks, um, in landscape here. I can see everyone from Rebecca to Joe.
Thank you.
We'll have to tell them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Craig, can you still hear us?
Yeah.
Are you in a box or something? What the hell?
I was out in a, in a barn and, and, uh, I didn't have very good, uh, connection out there. That was what the interruption was. So I had to come back into the house. They're doing some work on the house. So it's a little bit noisy, but, um,
So you're in the cover?
Someone said he was in an attic.
Yeah, actually I'm on the second floor in a, uh, in a window.
That's funny.
Can you see what I've been looking at?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you're kind of cut, you're kind of cutting out because we lost interest.
Some of us maybe.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, that's cool. Yeah, I wasn't sure where you were in a car or in a closet.
Yeah.
Very cool.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Okay.
Take care, everyone.
Oh, to be long. Thank you, Aaron.